It's now officially in authority. It's been accepted by the federal government. And when I was at the ceremony, I did hear that our airport is the third busiest airport in the state.
Wow.
It was high and good. There was regarding Dr. Collins that everybody heard a lot, maybe read some articles. At our last meeting, there was a lengthy discussion regarding Dr. Collins. He hasn't spoke. There was a lot of public comment that was basically focused at the board for not renewing actually, they like to refer to the determining Dr. Collins' employment. It was the health director and administration that chose not to renew the contract. And the board doesn't get involved in contracts not being renewed. We would get proposals for new contracts if they were on the budget. So administration did their job. It should never should have made it our board for discussion. I did address Dr. Collins, thank him for his 28 years of service. It was sad note that the end of his relationship with the county had been like that. Should have had something more positive form, but nonetheless, it is done. There's someone who contract already provided to another doctor. I'm not sure what we didn't have heard. And then we do have nine new districts have to do reapportionment. And I don't know if anybody heard you all seeing the map. It's novel, but it's considerably different from what it was. I think the only sitting commissioners, the seats that are going to be in conflict is going to be Rob Anshel and Carol House. And obviously, that'll be a threat for someone else to be running. So I really don't have anything else to report if there's any questions.
Thanks, Ron. Good evening. Matt Carjessi, Blair Township, community business officer. The September 2021 report, my staffs arrests one, and we're still not really arresting everybody. There was a kid out here playing president golf yesterday, so I ran him, and he had two warrants. And I texted the sergeant, I said, hey, will we arrest him? And he said, no, just leave him. So and then I did take away the other day, it was causing some problems, and the jail sergeant was annoyed that I brought her in, because he said they have COVID problems in the jail, which I think citations 10, complaints 52, traffic violations 3, warrants obtained 0. On the 7th, over the later weekend, K-Wall had molon, and K-Wall worked together, and they keep stuff on each other's properties. So there was a molon trailer filled with power tools on the property, and somebody broke the log and took everything, took all the power tools out of it. They suspect one of the employees possibly, but I'm not sure. I ran them all through a database with pawn shops, which doesn't really mean too much. They could just give it to a friend and on it, you'll be able to track it. So no leads were developed, but I plan on doing a geo fence. Takes a long time though, and the definition is down below.
Thank you.
I add a little certificate there. I did go to a three-day child abuse forensic interviewing refresher kind of course that I sent to my lieutenant and asked him to go to. So I really enjoyed that, and I learned a lot, so I added that to this report.
Thank you. Congratulations.
I passed. Thank you.
Judges' report? Okay. Public safety fund $734,270. Ambulance fund $768,878. Metro Act fund $16,953. Liquor law enforcement is $35,187. Mill foil fund is $12,685. Sewer fund is $1,974,245. Water fund is $2,775,019. Current tax collections is $3,211,194. And payroll fund is $839, for a total of $13,319,317.44.
Thank you.
Good stuff. Announcements and correspondence. Thank you to everyone that participated in Township Cleanup Day this fall. Our totals came in just under half the amount that we did in the spring cleanups. So it's working and/or I have not personally heard from anybody. We said we were going to discuss it if we heard complaints, but we didn't send out the township newsletter. So I don't know if that played any part. My it's just mine thinks it probably did, but I'm not I have not.
Right, nobody complained, but a lot of people came in and said they didn't know about it.
Yeah.
And that.
So I think we should probably reevaluate that again. And newsletters are important. I think the reason we stopped doing it was because department Hudson weren't wanting to write anything for the newsletter, and it was the same thing going out every time. And it's redundant, and it's, in my opinion at the time, that's not a good way to spend money. So I think if we maybe have staff meeting and let the employees know that we are going to do a newsletter if we choose to do, and to please put some thought and some pertinent information in the newsletters for the residents. Because we were under half of what we collected. And I know falls statistically has been less melt because we get hammered so hard in the spring, but it was a lot less.
Yeah. Well, I think it too bad it didn't get out on the signs somewhere too. You know, it could have been out there a couple of weeks ahead too, and it was just the day before.
But again, that's where we need other people to remember to do things like that also.
Yeah.
Cindy stuck in a thank you letter to Ryan who did disinterment at the cemetery. The family was very appreciative of Ryan. Did you give Ryan that letter too? And Matt Jerome and I have completed our citizen planner course.
Very good.
Yes. And he has asked actually to continue on for there's a certification program for a zoning administrator program through the MSU extension, and he would like to take that. It's pretty in-depth, it's pretty intense, but he's eager, he's excited, Lisa supports it. I asked Lisa too if she wanted to do it, and I've got the answer. But I found out today that we can get reimbursed through our car plan.
Oh.
That's car plan believes that that's such a beneficial program that they'll actually, upon successful completion, pay for one person to take it. So I'll submit for reimbursement for Matt. I think it starts this winter sometime, and there's only one day he'll actually have to go away for testing. But I looked at the program myself, thought about it for a minute. It's pretty intense, and yeah. So I'll be happy just having Matt do it. That's all I have.
Okay. I'd just like to remind the people it pertains to this Friday, there's the webinar for the VSNA utility software, okay, and all utility I have, from 9:00 noon and then 1:00 to 4:00. So just want to remind the people that pertains to, and it's going to be a long day, but I think it's going to be worth it. Okay?
And I do have minutes. I have my notes to make minutes for our water loss committee. I just haven't had time to put them together, but we are working on it. We do have Mike from Metron came and spoke to the committee, had a lot of insight for us on their meters. I sent out our committee thing. My brother runs a water treatment plant in Florida, and their water loss is 4.93%. Ours runs about 40%, and they have 12,000 customers, I think he said, and that, so a lot more than what we have. So I think we're on the right path. I mean, we are just searching for answers. That's why we're doing the utility billing to see, I mean, is it in the billing? You know, our three questions we started with on the first one, is it in the meters? Are there leaks, or is it in the billing program? So those are the three questions we want to get to the bottom of.
Very interesting.
Anything else? The purpose of the consent calendar is to expedite business by grouping non-controversial items together to be dealt with in one board motion without discussion. Any member of the board may ask any item of the consent calendar be removed and placed elsewhere on the agenda for full discussion. Such requests will automatically be respected.
A motion to approve the consent calendar as presented minus the minutes from this September 14.
No, not minus. It was just a correction.
I'm sorry.
I support that without the.
No minus.
Yeah.
Was that spot?
Yeah. It's me.
Okay, roll call.
Sykes.
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Walken?
Yes.
It's Patrick.
Yes.
Please.
Yes.
Blanchard?
Yes.
Kutra?
Yes.
Going to close the regular meeting, and we're going to open up for our first public hearing.
Oh, I'm sorry.
We're not going to close the meeting, we're going to back up.
There was a correction on the memo about the August consent calendar. And we need to make a motion about this, but this is incorrect. Should be check number 1788 through 1796. And the amount should be.
I did, but I think I left it in your office.
23.
No, it's 22.
22, 872, 62.
Thank you. And the amount should be 22,872, 62. So I will make a motion to approve payroll checks number 1788 through 1796 in the amount of 22,872, 62.
Support. It's been moved in support of to correct the August 10 minutes to reflect payroll checks number 1788 through 1796 in the amount of 22,872, 62. Roll call.
Kutra?
Yes.
Blanchard?
Yes.
Please.
Yes.
It's Patrick.
Yes.
Walken?
Yes.
Yeah, Bul.
Yes.
Sykes.
Yes.
Now we'll open up, we'll close the regular meeting at 6:18. And we'll open up the public hearing. For special use case S U SPR 21-09-01, the applicant beverage alliance, beverage alliance is requesting a special use site plan review to establish a 70,000 square foot beverage warehouse and distribution facility on vacant property located at 525 West Commerce Drive, Traverse City, 49685, parcel number 28-02-005-020-20, north of US 31. And this notice of this public hearing has been and was published in the Traverse City Record Eagle, and this is coming to us as a recommendation from the planning commission, and I know beverage alliance is here.
Good evening, Board of Trustees. Doug Mansfield, Mansfield Land use consultants, 8 acre Cottage Drive, Suite 201, Traverse City, Michigan. As the record showed, we were at the planning commission 30 years, 30 days ago. But I received the recommendation for the special use permit and site plan approval for the site at 525 Commerce Drive. And it's about 10 acre site. It was the home of the radio towers until a couple months ago. It's characteristically, the other characteristic is it has a great big hole in itself there. So it's going to take a lot of dirt to fill up. But what Alliance Beverage has brought, and the Gary's are here tonight along with their contractor to answer any questions, but posing a 70,000 square foot beverage distributorship and warehouse. Alliance Beverage is here in town right now. They're in some older buildings now, part of the Sarah Lee group of buildings, which are added on and added on and don't need fire code and all these things. So they're really excited to build this new facility modeled after Grand Rapids facility on a much smaller scale. But basically, this is a place where they will bring their truckloads of beverages in, stockpile them, sort them, and then repackage them on smaller trucks and take them out to their regional sales point. So it's a not a high employment, 25 employees total. It can start early in the morning, and it can go until late at night, and there can be some stragglers, but generally around dark, things start to quiet down, like that, until the next day. But given weather and where these people have to go and things like that, there can be some stragglers. Other than that, there's a little noise or noxious fumes or lights or anything else, and your zoning administrator has been very diligent in making sure that I've met all those other standards and criteria landscape wise. We addressed some fire department concerns, some hydrant locations. This will be connected to your sewer and water that just wasn't sold in the area. So really looking forward to get breaking ground ASAP on this. So we're here tonight. If you have any questions or concerns, please let us know. Thanks much.
Is there anybody from the public? Did you receive anything?
From Heather's plumbing.
Do support right there.
In support. I didn't either. I know they're here tonight. I just I loved your letter of intent. I love your how you came about.
Thank you.
That's super cool. It's very, it feels very community.
It's important.
Oriented. Yeah, that's pretty cool. And I'm really happy that you considered Blair Township as the home for your new warehouse. I think it's a perfect fit up in that area.
It just seems a bit in our eyes as well.
Yeah, thank you. That's my two cents.
I would move to approve special use case S U slash.
Yeah, does anybody else have anything or any questions? You can say something.
Oh.
You just can't load up.
Right. I'm so happy that they're building, still be being informed. Your minds, if you're in mind, we need to work with people. It's really nice to have you in the township. Thanks.
All right, no, I think we'll close the special public hearing. If I can figure out what time it is. 18:24. 18:24. Any further discussion?
I would move to approve special use case S U slash SPR 21-09-01 as it meets the standards for approval in section.
2204.
2204, right? That's the right section.
A through G.
A through G of Blair Township zoning ordinance and was recommended for approval by the Blair Township Planning Commission.
It's been moved and supported to approve special use case S U SPR 21-09-01 as recommended by the Township Planning Commission as it meets standards for approval as required in section 2204, A through G of the Blair Township zoning ordinance. Do you want us to also stick in the approval for the site plan?
No, we've got an O P C.
Okay.
Walken?
Yes.
Sykes?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
It's Patrick.
Interesting.
Kutra?
Yes.
Please?
Yes.
Blanchard?
Yes.
Thank you so much for making this such a pleasant experience. We don't get that often.
Thank you. It was a great presentation.
Thank you very much.
Congratulations.
Welcome to Blair.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thanks.
We have first, all that was ordered. No, it wasn't ordered. We are going to open up our second public hearing. Yeah, 1826. And this is for the Meadowwoods 1 and 2 Streetlight Special Assessment. This is the second public hearing that we are holding as required, and this too was posted in the Traverse City Record Eagle. And cards, mailings went out to people that this impacted. We'll just wait a minute.
Can we put somewhere on the resolution that this is built on the winter tax rule?
We're going to close the public hearing at 6:27. Board discussion?
Can we put anywhere? I got kids, I'm used to repeating myself. That this will be collected on the winter tax rule every year?
Is there a reason, I mean, oh.
You know, there was a reason, and I don't, I remember asking Sean about it when I missed it one year, and we had to do it, and he said something about the winter tax rule, and I don't know exactly what he said.
Because all the township stuff, I mean.
Is on winter.
Yeah.
I think the summer is specified more for state and schools. Where would you suggest in this resolution? Number two. For the calendar year.
2021 to be collected on the winter tax.
Yeah. And wouldn't it say 2021 and thereafter?
Actually, no, because it's not going to be $33 every year.
I just don't remember doing the other ones.
Well, we don't.
Oh.
Because there hasn't been any change to it.
Oh, okay.
But for this, because we held a public hearing and had to send out mailings, had to publish things in the newspaper, I've got attached to the resolution our costs, which we can recoup. So for the first year, it's going to be.
Okay. And then it could be cheaper.
Those prices, but then after that, it will be less.
Okay, so we just have to do a new resolution when we change the dollar amount?
Yes. Well, actually, we don't even have to do that, because periodic redeterminations of costs may be necessary over the course of the improvement project, in which case such redeterminations may be without further notice to record owners of or parties in interest in the property assessed so long as any such incremental cost. in interest in the property assessed so long as any such incremental cost increase does not exceed ten percent of the original estimate. So. I like that.
Well, it does, but then if I'm reading this, I think it's only gonna happen in twenty twenty-one. I, I get that, that covers that in future years. But for me, if I was reading this, I would think that it's only.
They're only collecting.
Yeah. I mean, I, it doesn't matter to me either way, but that's just where I would read it.
Okay, how about? Get rid of the where, the word yearly, so the cost for streetlights in Meadowwoods one and two will be set at thirty-three dollars.
Yes.
For the calendar year twenty twenty-one.
Yeah, and then to be collected on the winter tax. And then the periodic determination of costs going forward. Or redetermine the cost going forward. I, I'm just stuck on that for calendar year twenty twenty-one because that tells me that this is only good for one year.
Well, we can pass a resolution in twenty twenty-two.
Will we remember that? I know, I didn't even remember the thing. Trying to think of how you can word it right on here. Maybe I'm the only one that's reading it like that.
I'm reading that, but I'm, you know, by saying that this amount is for just twenty twenty-one, and then anything periodic redeterminations into the future, they'll be, you know, maybe go down or go up one or two, so I think that's pretty.
For the double lot, for the calendar year twenty twenty-one. To be collected on the winter tax and to be reevaluated yearly? Each year thereafter?
I think that's what number three's saying.
How about instead of periodic redeterminations?
Annual?
Yeah.
Annual redeterminations.
Yeah.
Phew. Well, I don't, I don't know. What if mid-year, our price, they find six more streetlights like they did this time? I mean, we, yes, the township. What?
Well, they're not gonna just come in and install six more.
No, I know, but before we were only getting billed for so many, and then all of a sudden.
But they cropped that when they did their audit.
It's an annual bill, too. It's an annual property program.
Well, it's not an annual bill. It's monthly bill.
But you probably want to hear.
Right, but we get billed.
Yeah.
Monthly.
How it's referring to residents.
It don't matter. I mean, I just, if I'm reading it, I'm thinking twenty twenty-one, but if everybody else is thinking.
Yeah, but you're the one who has to apply this, so we want it to work for what works best for you.
And I see what she's saying where annual, that there could be all of a sudden, Jerry didn't come up with a cost increase six months.
How about redeterminations of costs?
There you go. There you go. Not put any.
That's well.
Perfect. Yeah, good.
I make a motion to adopt resolution twenty twenty-one dash twenty-six, the resolution for Meadowwoods one and two streetlights with the addition under number two, to be collected on the winter tax bill. And.
Striking.
Striking periodic redeterminations.
Annually.
Oh, annually, yeah. Any further discussion? Roll call. Zeitz?
Yes.
Wolfing?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
It's Patrick?
Yes.
Please?
Yes.
Blanchard?
Yes.
Kucherov?
Yes.
Item three, budget amendments.
Okay, I've got a couple of them here. So when we worked on the budget, I think we talked about budgeting ten thousand for supplies for water, but the way it got entered on the Excel spreadsheet was a thousand, and that's how we adopted it. But in past years, we've budgeted ten thousand, because we're already over for supply for water. So we just need to make a budget amendment, add nine thousand dollars. For, and we can take that money from contracted services, because that's where operation services was coming out of, and put it into the supply item, line item.
I support.
Did you make that motion?
Oh, no, I supported her motion.
I made the motion that we take nine thousand dollars for contracted services and place it in the supply line item.
In the water budget.
In the water budgets. Any further discussion? Roll call.
Kucherov?
Yes.
Blanchard?
Yes.
It's Patrick?
Yes.
Zeitz?
Yes.
Wolfing?
Yes.
Please?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Okay, the next one is for the Town Hall and Grounds Budget Center. When we did the budget, we budgeted thirty-three thousand one fifty for salary and wages, and we based the holiday pay and the FICA on that. Since we've hired Ryan, and he's maintenance in water and sewer, we're taking half of his wages out of Town Hall and Grounds. So that would take the salary and wages down to twenty-six thousand, and the FICA and the holiday pay is based on that. And then Ryan's insurance, we're taking all of that out of Town Hall and Grounds, which is quite a bit less than what we budgeted for. So. I would recommend taking, taking what we saved there and. Either putting it in the park capital outlay or adding it to the Town Hall and Grounds capital outlay for one of the other agenda items.
Support.
Okay. I, I would approve amending the Town Hall and Grounds budget by making salary and wages twenty-six thousand, holiday pay a thousand, FICA two thousand seventy, and insurance five thousand seven hundred dollars, fifty-seven hundred dollars, and taking the twelve thousand nine hundred and eight dollars difference and putting it in the park capital outlay line item. Support.
Did you support it? Okay. It's been moved and supported to approve the Town Hall and Grounds budget, twenty-six thousand, salary and wages one thousand for holiday pay, two thousand seventy for the FICA, five thousand seven hundred for insurance. And the twelve thousand nine hundred and eight dollars difference, place it in the park capital outlay line item. Any further discussion? Roll call.
Kucherov?
Yes.
Please?
Yes.
Wolfing?
Yes.
Blanchard?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Zeitz?
Yes.
It's Patrick?
Yes.
Okay, then on the sewer fund, we didn't have anything budgeted for water sewer operator. So now that we have Patrick and Ryan, we're taking. What did I do here? Oh, I remember now. Nicole and I talked about it, and we're taking twenty-five percent of Patrick's wages out of sewer and seventy-five percent out of water. So the water super, the, the water sewer operator wages, that twenty-two fifty, that's twenty-five percent of Patrick's wages and twenty-five percent of Ryan's wages. Because Ryan's wages, we're taking fifty percent out of Town Hall and Grounds, twenty-five percent out of sewer and water, twenty-five percent out of.
Twenty-five and twenty-five.
Twenty-five and twenty-five sewer and water. So. Yeah, I remember what I did down here, though. All right, so I recommend moving twenty-seven thousand dollars from contracted services and putting it in the water sewer operator wages, holiday pay, FICA, insurance, and phone line items.
Put twenty-seven thousand towards, and then how, how the, the rest?
Huh?
Because that's like, the twenty-seven dollars. Forty thousand, forty-one thousand. Are you still looking at shortage?
Well. With the water and sewer, I mean, it's an enterprise fund, so. We're part, I mean, we don't get in trouble from the state if we're over budget on water and sewer. It's only the governmental fund. And we're already. When we, we did the budget, we were already at a, a negative.
So you're just gonna, the twenty-seven thousand, you're going to spread like a percentage of that? How are you gonna spread it?
Yeah, I don't know. Most of it's gonna go to what? To wages? I mean, we're gonna be over budget anyway.
Right. So you're just gonna put the twenty-seven thousand up to water sewer operator wages?
Whatever you guys want me to do.
She had suggested wages, holiday pay, FICA.
Well, I know, but it's like forty-one thousand. So you can't take twenty-seven, but you can put that whole twenty-seven up there and that. Yeah, and that's spread it across the rest, or you can make all of, all of these, hit all of these, and then whatever left over, put into wages. However.
I'm, I'm waiting for one of you two on.
Well, I said whatever you guys want me to do. I think somebody can, other than me, can make a decision.
So the twenty-seven thousand covers everything?
No, it does not. No, because it comes to about forty-one thousand. So that's what I said.
I, I went with twenty-seven thousand because, I mean, we've already got fifty-six, fifty spent out of contracted services, and I doubt we're gonna have any more, but, I mean, I could go to thirty thousand, but that's still not gonna cover it all.
Right. I'd say just put the twenty-seven thousand up to wages and then just let the rest bounce as they will.
Well, can you make a motion?
Yeah. I, I'll make a motion to take twenty-seven thousand out of sewer fund contracted services in the budget and put it up to water sewer operator, operator wages.
Support. It's been moved and supported to take twenty-seven thousand dollars out of contracted services and place it in water sewer operator wages. Any further discussion? Roll call.
Please?
Yes.
Zeitz?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Kucherov?
Yes.
Blanchard?
Yes.
It's Patrick?
Yes.
Wolfing?
Yes.
I think this one's a lot closer, if that covered it all.
Do you have a calculator on your trees?
No, but she's got her phone.
Your calculator on your phone. Yeah, that's. I'm sure I edited this up before, but I can't remember what I did yesterday, so let alone. A week ago Thursday.
I got seventy-seven thousand. Seven, seven, two, forty-six. Oh, but, yeah, but it would be seventy-two, because there's already seventy-nine hundred in that one, so seventy-two, so seventy-five thousand would cover everything.
What are you talking about, Chris?
There, under the insurance, there's already seventy-nine hundred, so it only really needs five.
Yeah, so does everybody get what we're doing on this one? The wages are seventy-five percent of Patrick, this is the water fund, seventy-five percent of Patrick's and twenty-five percent of Ryan's. And then holiday pay. That's twenty-five percent of Ryan's, because.
So I assume we need seventy-two thousand two hundred and forty-six to cover.
That's why I went with seventy-five.
Yeah.
I was thinking seventy-five thousand. So, and then sixty-one fifty for seventy-five percent of Patrick's FICA and twenty-five percent of Ryan's, then fifty percent of Patrick's insurance, and then fifty percent of each of their phones. So I would make a motion to take seven fifty thousand dollars from the water fund contracted services and spread it among water sewer operator wages, holiday pay, FICA, insurance, and phones.
It's been moved and supported to take seventy-five thousand from contracted services from the water fund and place it in water sewer wages. holiday pay, FICA, insurance and phones. Any further discussion? Roll call.
Zay?
Yes.
Please?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Wolfing?
Yes.
Blanchine?
Yes.
Fitzpatrick?
Yes.
Kucherov?
I'm for purchase township vehicle. Remember we talked about this last month? Doing a, a car for ordinance enforcement and zoning and something that's economical, not the big pickup truck that's getting seven miles to the gallon. And we've got Patrick and Ryan using the truck now, so they've been coordinating with Jerome and if we, we just need a vehicle. We're not requesting this bid, these bids.
The Burger Chevrolet participates with the, what is it, MyDeo? Apparently nobody up here does.
Probably not.
But I did get a second quote from Williams, just to be staple to the back.
Well, I personally think we should get a pickup truck instead, but I think it'd be a lot more practical.
Why?
And they, well, the water guys could use it, they could haul stuff if they need to. And I guess if you had a pickup, say like I got, they get fairly good mileage, probably around twenty-two miles a gallon.
They, they posted everything on here about the car, it's really a nice bid.
Yeah.
But they didn't say the average M V G.
Yeah, I don't know if I saw that or not.
I didn't see it.
Yeah. Yeah, I don't think it did enough.
Pickup trucks would be probably double in price, but.
What would a person pickup truck be? Forty, fifty.
I got.
Something like a Chevy pickup truck, you know, Dodges, it's like my wife's Dodge.
We had a.
Dodgers are so, are made for heavy duty hauling, so they're not really a company one. And I, I know Chevy pickup truck, it's almost like cutting down a Suburban, Suburban's really good, comfortable, right? But I know Dodge trucks, I know something like that, I know. Do you know about the person Chevy trucks?
We had a bid for a Chevy Silverado twenty-five hundred four-wheel drive, um, in May for thirty thousand, four hundred and fifty-six.
Okay.
Yeah. I, we, we eventually are gonna need a pickup truck, another pickup truck, I know that. My thinking with this was, um, a car for ordinance enforcement and zoning, because Matt's out just as much driving around and has been driving that truck that gets terrible gas mileage. And again, we've got the water operators who are using that truck. So because we had budgeted for this, just thinking the car is half the price, more economical. That was my thinking, I mean, we're definitely gonna need to buy another pickup truck, but.
Those aren't needed.
One's definitely hers.
Right, it, it would be nice to order both of them right now.
Yeah.
Could, but we haven't budgeted for it. We do have the truck.
I think the car for now is good, um, and if the water guys need a truck, we got a truck.
Well, that's what they're using, yeah, so.
But if the enforcer is using you need a car.
Right.
Right, yeah, he doesn't need a backend.
No, he doesn't need haul anything.
I move to approve the purchase of one twenty-twenty-two Chevrolet Malibu from Burger Chevrolet in the amount of eighteen thousand, four hundred and thirty-nine dollars.
Hold. It's been moved and supported to purchase a twenty-twenty-two Chevy Malibu from Burger Chevrolet for the amount eighteen thousand, four hundred and thirty-nine dollars. Any further discussion? Roll call.
Kucherov?
Yes.
Fitzpatrick?
Yes.
Please?
Yes.
Zay?
No.
Wolfing?
Yes.
Blanchine?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Number six, Traverse Connect Employee Assistance Program Rule.
Just give to me.
Oh, sorry.
Go, Chris, sorry.
Look at, I even caused you out.
Um, I sent out about four hundred postcards, so these numbers, we're hoping gets, um, a lot less. But I just want to roll over approximately eighty-four thousand for the delinquent water sewer utility bills, that's the monthly bills, um, eighteen thousand of the water assessment bills and twenty-two thousand for the delinquent sewer assessment bills onto the twenty-twenty-one winter tax bill.
I'll make motion to authorize treasurer to roll over the delinquent water and sewer and water and sewer assessment bills.
So far.
Any further discussion?
Okay, with this being rolled over, how long, I mean, it, it goes on the property taxes. And then when they pay the property taxes, then we're being reimbursed, right?
Right.
Cool, at least we're gonna pay.
Right, and we always get paid for them, because.
That way for many years, yeah.
Right, cause what happens is even the property taxes that aren't paid, that I send then to the county on March first, the county pays our special assessments back to us and then they collect for it.
Any further discussion? Roll call.
Wolfing?
No, I said last year I wasn't gonna vote for it again, I know we gotta get our money somehow, but every year the, the state dings us for it and the auditors, so.
Zay? Zay?
Uh, yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Please?
Yes.
Blanchine?
Yes.
Kucherov?
Yes, and my, my, I, yeah, I brought it up last year too, about delinquents too, but it's just probably if we don't, we're gonna get paid, so yes, I'm gonna still say yes.
Fitzpatrick?
Yes.
Item six, Traverse Connect Employee Assistance Program Rule.
This is just the renewal, um, the current cost per employee is the same. It will be a little bit more though, because we've got a couple more employees. Yes, yes, Patrick.
I make a motion to renew the Traverse Connect Employee Assistance Program. Support it. Any further discussion?
Well, this, this is only about a dollar ninety-two per inquiry.
Yes, but I believe it's. I wanna say it's a dollar ninety-two a month.
Okay.
But we pay it all for, for a year.
It's not, I mean, it's a good deal, it's a very good deal. Okay.
Roll call.
Please?
Yes.
Kucherov?
Yes.
Blanchine?
Yes.
Fitzpatrick?
Yes.
Wolfing?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Yes.
Item seven, uh, this is a, the reappointment of Adam Wagner to the Planning Commission. His term expires November thirtieth of this year, um, and Adam.
Can I make that motion?
Mm-hmm.
I'd make a motion to reappoint Adam Wagner to the Planning Commission, depart.
With the term expiring?
With the term expiring eleven-thirty twenty-four.
Thank you.
It's been moved and supported to reappoint Adam Wagner to the Planning Commission with the term expiring eleven-thirty of twenty-twenty-four. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Post? Uh, reappointment to the zoning board of appeals. As you can see, we have a lot of, um, really.
Well, Lisa had an old list, everybody is up to date except for Dave and Karen.
Okay.
So I'll make a motion to reappoint Dave McGee and Karen Cascaden to the Z B A with terms ending eleven-thirty twenty-four.
Score. It's been moved and supported to reappoint David McGee and Karen Cascaden to the zoning board of appeals with the term expiring eleven-thirty twenty-twenty-four. All in favor?
Aye.
Post? Number nine, uh, the baby swings and, um, this is for out in township park.
We, well, Marilyn had mentioned a couple things at the last meeting. I know Ryan took care of the bolts and the.
The balls?
Well, not the balls, cause we have to order new ones. Actually, we have to order a whole new panel. Um, but there, the therapeutic swing out there had cracks in it and needed to be replaced and then I had a lady call and say that exact thing and then that one of the baby swings needed to be replaced. So Ryan and I went up and looked and all the babies, all three of the baby swings need to be replaced. So I got a quote and I think, I think we should go ahead and order the parts. I mean, the, um, therapeutic swing and one of the baby swings has been, Ryan took them down. He's gonna take the other two down, but he, he had to get some other tool. I think we should just order them and then have them put them up in the spring.
Yeah.
I would make a motion to, uh, approve, uh, replacement parts for the items mentioned on the quote.
Any amount?
Of three thousand, seven hundred and thirty-six dollars.
Score. It's been moved and supported to authorize purchasing the suite set seats, whatever that is, did you get a pencil? The replacement parts for the equipment out in the playground in the amount of three thousand, seven hundred and thirty-six dollars. Roll call.
Kucherov?
Yes.
Fitzpatrick?
Yes.
Please? Zay? Zay?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Blanchine?
Yes.
Wolfing?
Yes.
Where's your voice going?
Yeah. Item number ten. It's awesome.
You're, you ready? It'll take a minute because it'll log you out, time to go off.
I'm gonna turn down a light too, so it's gonna be a bit.
What's that? Can you see it?
Yep.
So the last few months, I think, so May, I've been putting in the board reports remotely, so May, we're short staffed, we ran six calls with a couple hours of short staff. July, I gave you the booklet from the station study that we approved last summer. Then August, I put some more staff in referring to more short staff. So this is kinda putting it all together. This is the staffing, this is our financials, this is the station. Putting it all together, so tonight, we're gonna talk about progression of the emergency services. We're gonna explain the shift in call volumes we've been experiencing. We're gonna discuss our staffing and the financial stability of Blair Township Emergency Services. And then we'll get into the station study and the bulletin. This is the oldest picture I could find in our history books, that was kinda cool. I was working on it, Lilson Lear came in my office and he just goes, "That's a pretty cool picture, it kinda shows where we started from." But then he goes, "Hey boss, which one are you?"
And you pointed out which one it was.
Now.
John and Pam, isn't it?
I, I don't know.
Yeah.
This is the same building, they didn't, this is the building, this is still standing on Park Street. And I don't know when the addition happened, but in nineteen seventy-nine, Township Board started talking about our current function offices and the new Township Fire Department. And then in the summer of nineteen eighty, began the construction of our current building. So it, pretty well, it was designed for a bunch of offices and a one-hundred percent volunteer fire department. And we're twenty-twenty-one, so they did a pretty good job. If you notice up here, bring five volunteer fire departments, three apparatus bay. And a few years later, I think it was in nineteen eighty-six, you'll notice there's two more apparatus bay. And I think it's important, no doubt, that one-third of the cost of that addition was paid for by the fire department auxiliary from their fundraisers, we can't take breakfast, we gotta eat dinner. I think they did, you're coming out prepared during those years?
We used to do chicken dinners, dude.
Chicken dinner?
Yeah.
So if you notice, in a few short years, we had to add on to the building, we had to increase our apparatus. Also, one-hundred percent volunteer service. So Township growing, call volumes increasing, one-hundred percent volunteer service. We're beginning to tax our volunteers, they can't keep up with responding to the calls. And eventually, they started missing calls here and there, so something had to happen. Volunteers got tired of leaving their family, good actually, I guess. So what happened in the early nineties, I believe it was ninety or ninety-one, the Blair Township Board hired a full-time Township custodial person, which also happened to be an EMT firefighter and a full-time maintenance person, which happened to be a fire chief and an EMT firefighter. With doing the facility maintenance during busy call volumes, when people were at work, they were able to leave their Township that many times calls. Uh, helped a lot with not missing a bunch of calls. Nineteen ninety-four, Blair Township Board passed the Fire Police Special Assessment up to two-point-five miles. In nineteen ninety-six, Blair Township President's approved the ALUS, which had one-point-five miles. In the fall of nineteen ninety-seven, Blair Township Emergency Services started with the ALUS service. I believe it was in October, maybe November. Then in nineteen ninety-eight, we began hiring full-time staff, I know Daryl Case, myself, were hired June of ninety-eight. we began hiring full-time staff. I know Daryl Case and myself were hired June of ninety-eight. Um, I don't remember who the third might have been, Bob Griffin. We're staffing for nights. Then in two thousand, the EMT firefighters will begin staffing two people twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week. Then two thousand six is the hiring of our third. We have on shift today, today we have three people twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week. And we've been on that staffing level since two thousand six. Through all those growth, we've never asked, gone to the residents and asked for an increase of the ALS mill and/or the special assessment. So over the years, the Township growth and call volume revenues have always sustained the emergency services financially. Township growing, taxable and valuable, taxable value increases, call volumes increases, and now it's sustaining itself. Well, since twenty fifteen, we've noticed a change in our call volumes. Our call volume type has changed drastically, which is prompting us to pay attention to this. This is the total department call volumes per year. Um, overall, twenty fourteen through twenty nineteen, they're pretty close, within a hundred calls a year. Twenty twenty, eighteen forty-nine, that's because of COVID. Uh, we had a three or four month period where we had a thirty percent drop in call volume. We got easy when things started opening up, but it didn't really recover from that. And this year for twenty twenty-one, we're on track for about twenty-two hundred calls. Intercepts. Intercepts are when we send one paramedic in a equally unit, fifty thousand dollar towel down to Buckley, apparently use it. So one paramedic going on a call. If you look at these intercept numbers, you'll see some big changes. Back in twenty fourteen and twenty fifteen, we're running nine-hundred and ninety intercepts a year. So that a thirty-six percent drop. Anytime you see those percent changes, it's a change from the previous year. In twenty sixteen, we had a thirty-six percent drop. Anybody know what that is? Yeah, it's publicly closed. Then we went up. Twenty nineteen, we had a twenty-eight percent drop. That's from Green Lake going ALS. And then go take a person.
COVID.
For twenty twenty. Our Township call volume, this is our ambulances responding to primary calls have then steadily gotten increased from twenty fourteen to twenty twenty. I haven't figured out that twenty percent drop in twenty sixteen. The only thing I can think of is I know a few years back, we had a really cool cloudy rainy summer. If I look back at, um, another forecast of the summer of twenty sixteen, and I saw it had a above-average precipitation. So I we didn't put that, that's why we had a slow call volume back here. But as you can see, we're having a steady increase in our Township call volume. Then we have our fire calls. That's been a steady increase over the years also. To feel them out to this big increase, twenty-three percent in twenty eighteen. That's Chief Parker's first year where we had a structured fire almost every other day.
Were you helping?
And it's just a lot happened with the world, but our chief firing do, so. So that's our shifting call volume. Our call in order, sending one paramedic in a truck out is dropping our Township and fire calls are increasing. Creating a shortage. Leah Hornet Check and Robbie helped with this. Leah supplied from Central, Leah from Central was that she gave us the stats. If you look at the colors, every time there's a color, we've had a call within two hours of the first call. It's hard to read, but that first been black and yellow, that's six calls within two hours. And we broke it down into two-hour time frame, because it's tangled, that's where it is. So from ten call, get a scene, transport the patient, that's kind of a rough idea of where we look at. The call on average call rate. Then if you get down to that third row there, where you have multiple colors, that is multiple times in that same day that we have had that second call within two hours. So that yellow line, we had a second call within two hours. That tan line, different time in the day, we had that sequence where we had that secondary call. This thing has left the ramp. That's another instance within that same twenty-four hour period where we had a second call. I'm gonna, this thing works. I'm gonna show you a little visual throughout the year. And you're gonna see the age of the full color then. I'm gonna have you go. This is gonna scroll through the year of twenty nineteen and show you how many times during the day that we had a secondary call within two hours of the initial call. The other thing to think about this with the high interceptions in twenty fourteen and twenty fifteen, I think we would have the same thing. But again, because that's one paramedic in a truck going out, this wasn't so noticeable. Now that we're, Township, the call volume is increasing and our fire call volume is increasing, we need more than one person going out in those calls. Another problem with staffing is nowadays, if we're going on a car accident, we should be responding to ambulance and a fire engine. We have three people working twenty-four hour shifts. That's three people from five that we should have. Management works weekdays. We put in data on some little scheduling options. They put a four-hour shift on the weekend where people have the possibility to sign up for it. But that's in the system when they sign up.
Yeah, the management's cut out a little bit, works weekends.
Uh, this past summer, in July and August, we actually, actually added actually added an evening shift because benefit goes on at six o'clock, so we added evening shift for people to sign up from four to eleven. And that was utilized to fill some of the gaps, but.
Every Friday at five, there's a call.
There's it, I'm telling you.
The other thing to think about with all these back-to-back calls is yeah, PTSD has really been known as an emergency services department over the last years. So all these back-to-back calls, there's stress that our staff is experiencing. Trying to make sure they get back their I'm going by myself on this call, how are we gonna do it? So that's another factor that we need to think about. So in twenty nineteen, thirty-two percent of the time when we had an initial call, thirty-two percent of the time, thirty-two percent of calls, we've received a second call within two hours of the initial call. And this happened, uh, sixty percent of the days of the year. If you look at twenty twenty, that's thirty-three percent of that initial call, we received a second call within two hours. And that happened on sixty-six percent of the days of the year.
And it had a lesser call volume in twenty twenty. So our total overall was down. So that potentially could be actually higher.
Our fire calls increased by twenty-four percent from twenty fifteen to twenty twenty.
That is very impressive.
Let me add a little presentation.
Sorry, maybe a bit of water. So with the shifting call volume, again, we're going from one paramedic responding in this emergency vehicle to two people responding in a much more expensive vehicle. And then with our fire calls increasing, switch. Fire calls increasing, that calls for more than one person to respond in a fire engine also.
That's a nice picture, I think.
I thought so.
Any questions of our call volume shifts? I'll get to upon part. So what we need is that we need to increase our staffing from three people to four people with bright smiling faces.
Who's the smiling face of Blair Township?
Okay, how did he do it to his hair?
I think he was just being smart. That was when we were taking pictures for some photo IDs a few years ago. So we're, where are we financially with the emergency services? So we've increased our revenues. We've gone to Mayfield Township, we've gone to Grand Township.
It is.
Who contract fire services and like said, what you're paying us isn't enough. So we've increased their fees. Mayfield, angry Township, both had their first millages in place. Because we were quite, we said, you're not paying enough. It's not about the call, but the amount that to respond on a call, it's about responding for us. It's about the cost of having a fire engine in the station, maintaining equipment and personnel. That's always been on the scope of, okay, you don't respond to very many calls in our Township, how much does it cost you to do that? So we shifted their mind thought on that. We've increased our grant rating. Uh, we've got our year pack grant, that was about a hundred thousand dollars. We've got some other equipment. We've got some educational grants. And it can ask these guys, we've limited our expenditures. So much, that type of supervisor right there in the vehicle helping to fix our apparatus. That's how much we're going to the extreme.
Help you're sleeping.
So I personally believe we've exhausted all the possibilities. We've done everything right. We've done everything we can. And unfortunately, we're at the point of having with our residents for look for more money. How do we do that? Well, we'll look at millage versus special assessment. About a millage that's levied from real and personal property. You have to deal with that, they roll back. Um, I've heard over the years of they like to have the ALS millage, love leaving it to the choice of the people who decide if they want the service. I agree with that. But I wanna give you something else to think about. For over a quarter of a century, the residents of Blair Township has said, we want the service. They've spoken for over a quarter of a century. So I'm gonna ask you to take that into consideration. Special, special assessment, that's only levied on real property. So twenty, twenty-one collections, special assessment at two-point-five mils will bring in seven hundred and eighty-eight thousand. The millage with the setup, one-point-five mils, minus we have a headless rollback, so we're only collecting one-point-four-four mils will bring in four hundred and eighty-seven thousand dollars. For a total of one-point-two million, almost one-point-three million. Now, if you look at that, when we combined the millage, the one-point-five millage and the two-point-five special assessment and the four-mil special assessment, we would be collecting two-hundred, one million two-hundred-sixty-one thousand. The headless rollback, excuse me, the difference from collecting on personal property and the millage and that on the special assessment would make a difference of fourteen thousand dollars. Chalk and change, but not a whole lot. Then if you look at what we're losing in the headless rollback, that one-point-five mils, that's making a difference of seventeen thousand dollars. So I'd like to throw this out there to recommend, we do not levy the ALS millage. We set a special assessment for EMT fire police. We're up to four-point, four-point-nine mils on real property alone. We levy four-point-six mils. That gives us a security blanket of point-three mils for capital purchases. That point-three mils will be a little over ninety thousand dollars. If we levy four-point-six mils on real property, our clutching would be one million four-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars. Other things to think about with raising the special assessment. If we raise it for what they were paying now for mils, and raise it point-six mils, it would only be sixty dollars a year for every hundred thousand taxable value. It would increase our revenues by a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars.
Can you go back to your previous slide?
Yep.
I'm confused.
This is great. This is based on one following.
No, but go back to where you were when I said I was confused.
Well, that, I've known you for a long time.
Okay, never mind. No, never mind. I got it now.
So Wendy provided a lot of this information, she very good at this, so she provided the spreadsheet where I can go in and collect, see what it would be for bill. Um, and that spreadsheet that showed over the years, the change in the taxable value of Blair Township. The last couple of years, there's been five and six percent changes in the taxable value. Um, there's years back when she said it's clear where, first time she's ever seen it. Uh, years back, I think it was twenty twelve, twenty ten, there's actually a negative one percent, negative two percent. She said she has never seen that before. And she said it would be safe to expect a two percent taxable value increase from here to here. Another thing to think about this is this is me playing with the budget, it's gonna be cutting things close. The governor, I believe, signed the bill for Medicaid. And that's twelve point nine million dollars of state money with the federal match to bring the Medicaid reimbursement rate up to Medicare rate. So that would be about four or five hundred dollars in bill that Medicaid would be reimbursing out of twenty-five percent of our call line. But then we're actually twenty-six percent Medicaid on our pigmen mix. So that's four or five hundred dollars per bill increase on our Medicaid patients. Not totally hold my breath on that because there's a lot of variables involved with the Medicare thing, but at least things are in progress to start reimbursing us at a reasonable rate. Through my adventure of township board meetings, everybody asks, well, what do you pay? Well, Blair Township pays four mils. And that's what might pay two. But what you really have to look at is this column. So Blair Township, they tell that across, we have a three hundred million taxable value. That's what we set our levels at to collect what we need. If you go down to commensal, seven hundred and fifty-eight million dollars. I don't know if anybody has a craving that they can go dig some water for us, but so when we're setting our millage, it's not just comparing what other townships are paying in mils. It's about, you have to have attention to the taxable values of that function also. What will we be able to accomplish with this change? To be able to increase our staffing from three to four people a day, twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week. That's three more full-time people. Which is going to be around two hundred forty-five thousand dollars based on our average paying of our average day. Wages, our average insurance, based on that. It'll provide us a little bit better financial security for the emergency services. In time, as the township grows, we've got those hopefully Medicaid increase in revenue. Couple areas I'd like to see increased, to be able to increase on our budgets are equivalent to the trade budgets.
You know, another important thing to just mention for us to think about is we all know how hard it is to find quality paramedic firefighters. It's across the state, it's not just in this area, it's everywhere across the country. And we are lucky in Blair Township to have the quality of the people that we have. We are so lucky. I, there's not a department in this area that doesn't look at Blair Township. I, I hear it all the time and I work with them, so I know for a fact. Um, and when you're trying to draw the caliber of people that, that we want and that we have and to retain them, when, when your job is based on a millage that comes up for an election every four years, I, if, if you're looking at trying to bring on new employees, you know, that's something. If I was a young person, I, I would be looking to see, you know, is this township, is it millage based? Because if that millage fails, then I'm gone before I make my decision when I'm going to work. So I think that would be another plus of eliminating the, the millage and in, in going with a special assessment is, is basically it's job security for our employees. And I think it's something, you know, that new employees, I know I would say, I think in this day and age also, any new employees looking, you know, working for elected officials too. So it's just another, in my opinion, um, job security for our employees and.
That's very true. When I hired you here, I'm like, wait, my job for a night on a millage every four years? After a couple of elections, I was like, I'm not here.
Yeah, and then you throw in Angie worked for a bunch of elected officials.
Try being an elected official working in the fire department. That is fun.
So now we come into the station study. We have to, the station study really focused on four, five and six minute response times. We're, we're going to focus on a six minute goal. Why? Brain death begins at six minutes without oxygenation. Same thing for the fire department. Average residential fire can create untenable conditions at six minutes. So we, as leaders, you as a township board, this is something we really need to focus on when we're providing our emergency services for our residents.
Can I ask a question?
Absolutely.
How much are you bringing in for weddings?
I don't know, Nate, I don't know if you noticed or not, this is a second study featuring this presentation. Kind of provides an example of our young people being proud of their job.
Yeah, and they'll go up here tonight.
So let's look at where we're at. That's us right now. Across the street is Green Lake Township. The full township sits completely to the east. And our goal is supposed to be six minute response times.
It'd be that Green Lake Township resident right straight across the street. And we might have a traumatic brain injury or something. Weird.
We no longer respond to cross street. We've had calls without Green Lake, have heard their angles dispatched to the cross street. Our crews get the truck and drive over to help all make sure the patients treated before until they get.
Tomorrow's cyclical, you guys were there before Green Lake and you weren't talking about it for that night.
So these purple bats that you see, these are all recorded in the photos in our township.
Is that E M S C F fire vault?
Yes. Tom's corners. Manorwood, Ironwoods. Well, if you look at the picture, that some of the young people just going, uh, working on a shift, going out on their own practice. Um, their training, those are the fire training, they're just going out and those are training. I gotta stop at this picture. This is Amy Wigan. She does great up PR for us. She's a mother of four. Look at those kids. They're all sitting there quiet with their hands up. I'm not sure what she's saying to them, but. So in the station study, we did the station study goes for years, that's been the domain of the emergency services. Do we have two sub-stations to split the response times or do we have one centrally located station? It's always been a discussion with River Road and Bight and Road area.
For a substation.
For a substation. And remaining here.
That's the other one.
Now, you try not to let financial dictate your emergencies and services needs. But you really have to stop to think about if we have two stations, we also are going to be asked to duplicate apparatus. So if one crew's out, we're going to need a loud fire truck at most stations. We're going to need a fighter and something else, ability to pump that station. And people. Chief Parker put in his wish, opinion of what we should have at each station and it told to be about eight hundred thousand to a million dollars to duplicate. So if you look at the yellow lines on that, that's certain the incidents we've had. The yellow line is a six minute travel time. That picture is the ready max fire up in Little Island County. If you notice the tanker there, that's our tanker. I was going to say dumping a little, but providing another little water. So the orange, if we had go to two stations, for room Bight and Road area, maintaining those current stations, the orange shows our overlap. So we're duplicating our services with that overlap. You know, see how much effect that has with a couple of slides from now to. So as y'all have this, um, station analysis, it was recommended centrally located station. If you push the right button, that area down here that was not covered before is covered. We have growth. Over here, subdivisions going in, this area is covered, all within a six minute timeframe. So the, from the station study, it proves that the centrally located station that's covers, has the best coverage. The other thing to think about, which goes along in line of duplicating services apparatus is we do what we refer to as jumping trucks. If you go into a urban fire department, into a municipality, firefighter shows up in, in the station in the morning, he's assigned one truck, this is where you see, and he call you go out and this is the truck to take. Our staff, we could be going out in echo unit, as a paramedic down the Buckley. We could be getting an ambulance, full staff going to the Blair Township president and just pay. The next call, they could be, I don't, tanker assist as a mutual aid. Next call, they could be going on a rush truck to allow fire through your valley. So our crews have to be well trained on all the apparatus. And you never know from one time to the next of what, of what call is. So that's also supports. I'm not done yet.
Dylan, I'm not done.
It's over.
So this is our station coverage. If you notice on the left-hand side, this is breakdown by acreage new coverage. Which there are some acres that went referred to as parcels, but acreage does a better coverage because we know that you take twenty acres of land, it can be broken down to become a different, because of how big it is. So our, currently, our, where we are today, we are covering four thousand three hundred acres within that six minute timeframe. The satellite station would be covering forty-seven hundred. Uh, combining stations, sixty-six hundred acres, almost sixty-seven hundred acres. If you notice that math is off, that's because of the overlap. The centrally located station would cover almost eighty-five hundred acres within a six minute response time. This, I'm going to go backwards on this one. I'm going to go down here to the right. So in twenty eighteen, we had nine hundred and three incidents at four hundred and forty-one patients. Why is there such a difference in that? Because we have intersections that will respond there multiple times for car accident. We have assistance living center that we go to on a regular basis, so that, that's why we have nine hundred and three incidents at four hundred and forty-one patients. A central station, we wouldn't be able to respond to seven hundred and seventy of those incidents within six minutes. Combining station, having two stations, only six hundred and thirty-three within the six minute timeframe. And if you looked at our current station, we're at five hundred and fifty-four within a six minute response time. So from those stats, from our current station of nine hundred and three incidents, three hundred and forty-nine incidents were outside the six minute travel time. Notice all purple mats there, that's pretty close. That's all on the Ironwoods, Manorwoods. So that's quite a few, that's a large percentage of the calls that we're not making within that six minute goal. A centrally located station, nine hundred and three incidents, only a hundred and thirty-three would be outside that six minute goal.
I'm just going to put it out there because when, when you come up with, um, the six minute time, are, are you taking into consideration, um, is that, is that time from when they, they chugging route? Or is that from the time of dispatch?
This is based off a program that Cassie had that did our station study. All these times are normal driving, speed limit, normal conditions, not rush hour, not lights and sirens. This is normal timeframe with the, I think it was M dot program, taking consideration of speed zones, traffic lights, how long it takes you to get from point A to point B.
I.
So through the station study, South Creek subdivision, two of our homes, they're looking at property that north of another subdivision that's always been, no matter what we do, it always seems to become the entrance of South Creek subdivision. When we had our ISO, Chief Parker asked them to pull mapping for ISO reports. And central station and two stations, the ISO report came to the entrance of South Creek subdivision. So I did, I asked Cassie, can we, can we check the driving distances? So from our current location to the furthest address in South Creek subdivision, which I think is on King Arthur's Quarter, is seven point eight miles and takes eighteen minutes to drive. Normal, normal driving from a centrally located station would be ten minutes and five point nine miles. So that's a considerable, we're not making that six minute mark, but we're almost cutting that time in half. So where are we? Emergency services in the township, I believe. We've outgrown this current building that was designed in the late seventies. Township box is also, we're looking at, trying to move our staff and have no place to put them. It was designed to be a hard-earned volunteer service. And our call line, they're dictating we need to increase our staff when we get ordered to them. And most importantly, we have to look at serving our residents and where located on the furthest last order of the township. They're not needing that six minute goal. This is not clicking me. So I get the pleasure and honor. Our township supervisor has been working on getting property. She's been working with T Capsy and the Olson Foundation for the last three years. We worked hard on this and believe it or not, when she was working on this and I asked for the station study, I didn't know this was in the mix. I didn't know this was in the mix, I didn't know this was happening. Just tend to follow the place that way. So, I've been kind of involved with this, uh, been lucky enough to sit in on a couple meetings. Originally the Olson Foundation gifted this property to the TCAPs, picking the fifties. For educational purposes. And the pole's been working on, and working with the Olson Foundation to get it back to the township directs and trails. In the meetings, TCAPs. Would like to keep eighty acres. That is because if they futuristically need to build a high school out of this area, they need eighty acres to facilitate a high school. Tart trails are involved, this is where I will. They're super excited because they're actually going to get, have the potential to get some trails in the south end of the county.
That connected to the Boardman Lake, Boardman Pond area trails.
So, she's working on this, I'm like, hey, this station study, and you're talking on that property right there. How much property is it? That is a hundred and thirty acres, you can't sue the law, so it's a hundred, okay.
Thirty point five acres.
This right here, this is a existing two track that goes back to that. TCAPs. Has asked for some initial plan or concept of a trail system to be put in. So this is all subdivision here.
That's Tracy's stuff.
So this would be a trail going to the tart trip. And.
Or jumping on the two track that actually leads and goes all the way up to Blair Elementary School. So. Likeable to school for the children, walkable to school.
Uh, another Olson Foundation and TCAPs are very supportive of the property being utilized for the fire station. They're really excited with the trail. Because. Our firefighters, any of us people would be there twenty four hours a day, it's just not some parking lot out in the middle of the woods. You know, they have to, but just their presence there, because the career of a parking lot for people to utilize that trail system would be huge. This is the. Station with parking lot, you see this building over here, that would be some proposed. Um, men's and women's bathrooms for people utilizing the trail system. And then we've been working with an architect and he's been. Putting things back together, you know, we, we, we need something to put down as a proposal for you guys, a concept to make you see what we're talking about. So they're hanging up to develop this video. This is kind of the. What we've worked at on designing for a station so thus far. No details involved yet. This time because of the topography, we're able to have a second floor. For educational classroom and s- uh, storage. Is, that's much cheaper to build. Two stories than it is. For footage wise.
Notice the big ladder truck?
Do you foresee outgrowing that though?
Not my opinion. We, we've done a very brief. Plan. And in the plan, we built it from.
Forty to fifty.
Plans to forty to fifty years. Perfect, their bedroom spaces, but. Do what the ability of team members around to increase our building, sleeping rooms. It's a building for the next forty to fifty years at least.
Yeah, but the, the design of that building, you could add on to if you have.
Correct.
A lot simpler than this building.
Correct. Would have room to add on to.
Yes, yes.
So where do we go from here? I think we need to decide, uh, how would proceed with that financial stability. Heard my recommendation of the special assessment. Uh, you're the ones at the table with the vote. But I think that's. Something we seriously need to look at. Once we decide that. We will be going out into the general public to educate them. Probably showing them this presentation of this is why we, we're certain this is what our needs are. That, that's gonna be adding us to educate the general public through meetings. Subdivision association meetings. Uh, it'll be a lot of work. But we need to do it. TCAP's property. That is. Last week, the finance committee has. Approved, passed, recommended to go to the township, to the TCAP's board for approval. So everything is getting in line for that approval, for this property to be handed over to the township with some cost.
Yeah, I, Carrie, our township attorney is actually reviewing the, the quitclaim deed. They're so close, October twenty. That is TCAP's board meeting, it was actually scheduled for eleven, but they had to cancel that meeting, so it's on the agenda for the twenty.
So, yeah, that's huge, I mean, if you think about it, we're, we're outgrowing this building. We have property that is basically.
You don't have to pay for it.
We don't have to pay for it, and it's centrally located.
What, um. What it will cost the township is um. TCAP's attorney is reviewing the quitclaim deed as well. We have the property surveyed. So the cost of the survey, the attorney review. Fred's cost for sticking in. That the site plan for materials and everything, which just actually really helped seal this deal. And Brian Suicide talked to him today, and he'll contact an environmental company for a phase one testing, just to make sure that there's no contaminants. On the property that we, we ultimately then would be stuck. It's not super expensive, and then. That's a, I think the quitclaim deed says a dollar. Hundred, close to a hundred and thirty one acres.
That's, yeah, I, I don't know what the value of that is at the market.
Highway front is, I don't know.
So. From my view, I mean. We have the property, we're working on the property, which is a big relief. Um, we don't want to have to purchase any property for new apartments, that's would be have the access of the trailhead for the public to use, utilize. That is unbelievable, the benefit for the residents who use that and the emergency services. Once that is finalized. I'd like a consensus from the board proceeds with this project. Submitting for RFP. For to actually hire, hire that part of that. And start moving forward. I grew up on a farm, I have a small farm, and I'm telling you. I have never had so many conversations about what came first, chicken or the egg. So Dr. Fred. How much property do we need? Well. How big the building is, well, tell me the size of the property. Oh. That is the end of the thing. Then I guess you, well, alright, we're going to propose to you a new apartment, well. And I also need something to propose for you, but for you to ask for it. So, and, and then the chicken or the egg, this whole type. So that's what I have, that's a presentation. There's a lot, thank you for a lot of information. I hope you give some serious consideration and allow. Emergency Services to move forward.
It was very nice, very informative.
Thank you.
Um, very well put together. Lot of information.
Nice job.
Thanks.
I'll give my two cents. Cause I see the daily activity come and go, cause my office is right there up front, and even today. The ambulance started coming back and he couldn't even pull on the driveway, he just had to keep going to the next call. They are very busy. Um, I talked to Samsa about this and that, is, and he said they were going out to talk to the people, cause my concern is. It brings back the water assessment days and what happened to the board once they put that water assessment out there. There, I, I said I need my job for a couple more years. And that, and he said, yeah, they were, so, I, I mean, I am all for this project, I think it's awesome, I learned a lot when he showed me. I'm just concerned with our people and our residents and that we are in a pandemic, we do have a lot of low income families. That's, that is my, and if the people say, I'm so excited. You know, and I'm all for, I'd be an ambassador for it, I think it's something we need. Um, I think, if you look at, there are not very many companies from two thousand and six forward that has not increased staff. When, when you increase call volumes like this. And that, and, and then the other fact that, and I know these guys don't say it a lot, but they cover MMR a lot. So not only are they helping our residents, they're helping, you know, a lot of other residents in a lot of other places, so.
It's totally about, this presentation many nights of community education. Cause that's how you solve this.
Right.
And it's very important, and they see something like this in the need, that's needed, or things can fall apart.
Right, right.
So I think people are more apt to pay more for something that concerns their health.
Yes, and something, yeah, and something that, doing the master plans over the last many years. Uh, trails have always been number two or three requested for the, within our community. So. Now we have a start, and TART's very excited about tying into, this would be incredible for this area.
Yeah, I've been working with the Tart Trail with the Land Conservancy. Brad Olson. Everybody is a hundred percent on board and excited.
Tracy, you talk about working, working here and seeing them go, y'all live next door. See them go a lot too.
And Nicole, nice job. I know that's taken a lot of work, thank you.
Hey, how about Samsa with this whole techy stuff? When I started here, he had a flip phone. I'm so excited.
Come a long way, baby.
Get out, really good.
Yeah.
Yeah, excellent presentation.
Really, really good to show some public meetings, so.
That is a very important part of the strategy.
First job.
And I think, I mean, you should, you can see by the Halloween thing in that, how, you know, our residents love this place. And that, and I, I don't foresee anything, I would just like some input from them.
One of the first pictures you showed with the original land laws?
I worked in that. I know I'm dating myself, but yes, I did.
We know the picture too, that showed the big, uh, sirens, the poles, the sirens, the arch and everything was going off. I was on the park in that Maryland, and I could hear the siren from home, because we, we didn't have enough pages for everybody to have, so when the siren would go.
You had to go.
Yeah. Extended public input.
Linda Pepper, and you all know me by now, um, three quick things, the board of commissioners will be having a study session on the ARP. Any money, that eighteen million that they're going to get, finally, on the twenty seventh of this month. So just for you to, those of us who've been yelling at, they finally listened on that, so that's good. Second thing, um, you would, part of Blair will be in District One, which will be joined to. Um, Green Lake Township. Part of Blair will be in the, the district that will be with Kingsley. And part will go up to a district up above, just north of you, that would be where Mr. Jewett lives. Mr. Klaus would live in the Green Lake one, which would include part of you, and nobody lives in the, the Kingsley one. So just so you know how it, it would split, you're all split up, Green Lake Township that's been split up is back together. So it's kind of interesting, they did keep all of Kingsley together, there was a one map they were talking about, it was gonna split Kingsley in half. So that's another thing for you to know about, so. Um, you can see the map, it's not absolutely final until another ten days or so, then it'll be as final as we can make it from our hand here. And then the third thing, I was blown away. This was an excellent presentation, what Nicole is doing is just marvelous, and boy, would I love to see this kind of forward looking thinking. On our board of commissioners for our county, you guys are exemplary. That's all I can say, and I say that frequently to other people about, if you want to see local governance in action in the right way. For the people and smartly done, go watch the Blair Township meetings.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks Linda, that means a lot.
Well, it's just true.
Any other public input?